County Council meeting, or special meeting, we have some issues we need to resolve. That's why y'all are hopefully, the tax bill is coming out in the morning, farmers market. We got a couple of bids that we throw in there because we can get that done since we're busy. So we'll get started, let's start with implications we have to frank to pray for.
That's right, you already said we follow over, we do thank you for this day, Lord, another day above the dirt. Lord, pray that you help us here. Lord, give us wisdom in Jesus Christ's name we pray.
My best God, so please so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Council on time. Okay, next is our bids and purchases. We've got a motion on those.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
Does that A, Andy?
Yes.
And two?
Yes, sir. The stores near Ford Drive and the radius for the Sheriff's Department.
We've got motion and a second and a discussion. You know, always a favor right here. All right, the general, we have purchases of C, D, E, F, M, G. Yeah, we want to do those one at a time?
Mr. Chair, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session. I think we need to discuss one item before I feel comfortable enough to vote.
Okay, I was, I assume you're talking about item five?
Yeah, I'd like, can I thank all of the mayor connected to one another and I'd just like to get some legal clarification?
No problem, no problem. Yeah, we can do that. All right, we have motion, move into executive session, second, all those in favor? Very good.
It shouldn't take long.
Hey Chris, sorry, I got ran out, I got ran out of county council.
It's a lot that could've stayed here.
Looks to me like they're having a little secret session in their back room. Nothing like having things behind closed doors.
Thanks a lot, Chris. Have a good day, bye.
All right, great. What in order?
I know.
People are, people are. There's walking in one, coming down the stairs, two were there, one I don't know. And Angela's there, she can handle, or any prices. She like your, your number two? My number two girl. Her and Joe, yeah, her and Joe. And I mean. No, that's Tom. Anything that you sign her, Angela.
Hey, that was her cell phone, so I'm not sure what you want to answer.
Full favorite.
Oh, her is eight nine two three four three six.
Don't worry.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
They keep everything all the other all day long now. The tractor was, Angela can't, Donna can't want to be the day to day. If you're replacing.
What's up, man?
Morning. One of my coworkers called me this morning. As I was going out driveway, uh, asking if I knew Chris is something, Chris Holson, Angela. She tried to call him, but you know, I. She didn't hold him night, so who do you call if you have an emergency for Angela, you call Natalie? So she had nothing.
They can call, maybe some sheriff, I can call that.
And, uh, what was it, some pit bulls driving around, Riceville Road, killed some, killed some family cats out there, stuff like that. She was pretty upset this morning, so, since I saw Diana, knew she had nothing. What do you do?
Those ones hit one of them.
Again, that's the thing, that's the thing, I mean, what happens if the pit, if they run at the pit bull, because it's killing a cat, and they turn onto him, that's.
That's, I mean, can you switch and watch them? I don't care if it's a pit bull or any other dog.
Again. Kids gonna be running around, gonna be loud and screaming, and if those dogs start getting aggressive, they can do anything.
What do you need some? Now, here we go.
Well, I'm grateful Steve.
Is there a G dog again? He said, they have the airport. My work's at North Street Airport, all of those, this twenty-two. She got. Around, broke. Bags of this is on top of it, and they shoot stuff, God, they bring fire. They got one shooting dogs. The airport, dog on runway, flight, getting weird, that's not weird. And then they, airport was like. We didn't put packs of wild dogs, they rode that, airport. I think they got a truck, they got their license. They put deer in the depths, like, airport seats, and people can cruise, they have a bomb, a bird of year or something. Pieces. That's something that they could do, though. It's hard enough there. Yeah. Yeah. You do that. They don't cost them. That's okay, one on the front, one on the back, some on the. Kids waking up at eight, six.
Fire alarm's going off.
Huh? I don't hear anything. It should take a very good. Play downstairs, boy, someone, I got four of them, there's four rooms in the hallway. All right, here I am. Absolutely. Oh, man, man.
How was this one, the change of letter?
I just pulled the battery out of one, and it stopped, so. I'll put a new battery in. You put one in one of the. I'm deciding to let you in the battery. I had a battery in my hand, so I penta. Nah, I'm working out.
Beep 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 beep.
You haven't channeled up? Y'all, we've got, everything, there are bees, whistles, they got that, she start crying and crying. We have the TV, the washing machine doesn't have a, wired away.
Was there a handle to that after all this?
Oh, yeah, I haven't talked.
I found out that when they do the next field of heat, might not.
Man, she doesn't think that that was how it is. Staring at something, have to broke the rubber, put a barb, you know, blow up, it was on batteries, so like every fifteen seconds. And I've been trying to figure out what it was, and see if anyone around this. Yeah, yeah. Then. Yeah, sure, you can do a sharp wave.
What?
Sharp wave.
No, it doesn't.
A sharp wave? Sharp wave. Run it off.
Yeah, this one, I mean, it's bad, but he didn't buy it.
And he, he.
He took it by trucks. Yeah, but.
He was.
Been looking at it.
Have you hit it tall? That's okay.
Break it, shake it, pull it.
I'm gonna break, just where we stand.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Who's up there?
Your wife.
Oh, God, was he in the water? Gracious, nothing. Because you know, I always watch the shark when people bring him on the boat, and they start pulling.
That's like, they get air hunters.
Yeah.
Bring them.
Sharks, sharks, don't bring them in a boat.
Someone's game like that or something. Believe so. And then, uh, the man came out Saturday, did a interview. Good Lord, bear, came out, said he wanted four forty-five to show up to be true. Today she called, yesterday I didn't even touch it, they're beating. Been thirsty. And. Have been surgery, hot, Thursday night, going back from six hour drive to the end stop, closing that stop every hour. Boogeyman. Play house together, went through them all day, when everybody's in the house, Friday night. Sarah, your board is guarding me, everybody's. Uh, uh, changing his bandage. Saturday. Twenty-five, like, I drove back to San. I don't think you can see all the men at the other.
As you can see, there's only. Three people in the chambers besides me. One of them's the guard. With no one here, why would they have to go to a back room to speak about anything? I don't understand that, do you?
We're done today, we're just waiting. Ah? We're done, just wait a minute.
What did I say? You can jump late.
And it looks bad, I mean, I sure bad, the shirt just spent, but don't you want to be paid? Okay, that's what I say. Although I have tax and import for people. We got, we got yourself. Okay. Come talk to my next. Okay, I asked. And that's, it was the same thing with like, uh, basketball. And we, we called them, we asked them, you know, we didn't want to close it. And the guy said, oh, yeah, we gotta help them, so we made, made. So then, I finally had to have Tom go over to the basketball store, and, you know.
And, and sure, no, they didn't have any.
Sure.
And then they're wasting the same time, so they're wasting their time.
Well, who does?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it just multiply that, it's definitely better to just. Really hard. Hard as a hundred there, usually, there's some points. But then, they're. They buy a game at the wrong place. It's not where we put the credits, most months, you know, work, if I get ready, can you take it? That would be.
Everybody take the money?
They get around to it, you know. So. Today, I made bone chips off of that day. Where you can put like a paracord off the side. Okay, she should be like. Back up, we're gonna see. Long shell.
Yes.
I have a thing for a change of barbecue, I don't get. Looks likely.
Yeah.
For that. We can slot them for our. It's my lucky bar. Good, I got one last. My garage, buried somewhere.
But I got it in Florida, 'cause I needed it during hurricane, it was down. I don't think you want to be all part of it. Now that you need one. That's the mayor's son, you're gonna need it in the authority. Yeah, 'cause, 'cause the fuel's all bad, and then you gotta buy it. During hurricanes.
Barter. Unless you want to wait four hours on it. The other one's a generator. Take less, I mean. There's tornado warnings or whatever, and I can go out there and eat one of the generators. Bottom off, brother, that's a generator. I don't know what kind it is. Bottom off, though. Well, pretty good. Steep like that. But I really do. You know, like, people love that. Is this a pull behind generator, or is this like a? I don't, I don't think it was a pull behind, because he got it ripped out. And it was a whole, a perp. But, but. Say fire come up, or something. Have they had a case? Yeah, so, I'm like, I saw it in two thousand and four, and then you, yeah, I saw it. Yeah, uh, it should be around. Five days.
Lots of.
Yeah, so, and, uh.
More time for about.
Yeah. And, the security's are clear. Yeah, that's, you're pretty great for it.
Thank you.
All right. This was heat to be bad, because it's a temporary, you know. Little big bomb player, I thought. I don't know, I'm not. Yeah. Two thousand and four. So, uh, I'll refer that for eight and down there, all that, it was close to campus. Wouldn't create that kind of stuff. I just, I just.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, twenty-six thousand, or tons, almost twenty-six thousand tons, turned on the volume, and all that. City Dave had about a hundred thousand. And then, now, they're gonna come in, and fortunately, they had a park area, they've developed it.
And they're gonna.
Yeah, that's okay. They chewed it all up there, and you got their own computers. And just real. And they chickened all away. These little trucks bring it in, and they just ride it up, you know, these trucks, start sailing. And they're making money, they, they're free birds up. Well, they're.
Yeah, boy, that's.
Some of which is the wide mind opening kind of thing, and all that, acts middle thing, reports. More.
Usually, these contractors, they don't want money.
They do all that? Yeah. That's true, for price. For price, but if you're being reimbursed, ninety, ten. Yeah, I own those, it's a thing that like, most of them, it's a challenge. I mean, it's like, you know, where you might have something like, maybe a dollar forty-four a yard or something like that.
Just supplying them, right?
And it's like, isn't these guys, they just go around. Or, they ask you to spend, then do it their way.
We gotta be fair, supplying them now, not for. Going in, well, we help you. I don't think so. What are you trying to, I'm going to school. I'm sure you can figure me something. Well, this is gonna happen here.
Yeah, I got so many calls just right after that. Oh, the big guys are like, they're like, uh, what do you call them? Bulters, yeah. They call, call. Master business. Thing is, you do without them. Cause you just don't have the forces to be able to do it yourself. Actually, yeah, that's something, you need to come along, these things contract out before, you're not gonna see them. See, is that something that works in Angela's that? Yeah, she gave me a bunch of stuff that would have, well, it's about to, if you go, it's like, you get, you go out. And then, that, that, you, and stand. I still have a head. I mean, you. Song is. Is, also, law, I'm sure you're here, market, it's wrong, it's the person. And they, they have to say, you know, something, so, that's. Now we have. Yeah, they have acres, you know. How, uh. Well, yeah, it's actual, torn again. And you got other stuff. Yeah. And that's what. It's true. Yeah, there's a lot of cables, shirts, something. Wire, that'll. Just. And usually, you know, when you're trying to clean that kind of stuff up, by the time it's settled. It's hollow. And that's, so, what's. You just. Contractor. That's why you have. Yeah. That's why. That's why. Yeah, it's always. We. And we will, we will. Right. The, the contractor, the work. True. This guy's still, yeah, they're, they.
They're very often.
Yeah. Hey, John? Uh, we're doing okay? Uh-huh. Okay. 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 Yeah. Okay, okay. 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 Yeah, yeah, I think probably just the report. Right, right. And, uh, you figure, you figure, is it gonna be like, ten, ten loads or twenty loads, or? Just as a guess? Yeah. Yeah. Right. Right. What about like, uh, metals, that kind of stuff, is that, is that all taken out too, or? Oh, okay. So, it's primarily just the guts, the building, and that kind of thing? Okay. I will, I'll let my scale operator know too. Yeah, I appreciate it, John. Hello. Hi, thanks. I'm here at the head of the building, and, uh, just want to let you know that I got a call from John Feckel over here. He's got, um, uh, I guess a building they've turned down out there in Batesburg, Batesville. And, uh, he's supposed to forward, he's gonna forward me a copy of the permit, I guess they. I guess they've already taken that, especially all that kind of stuff. And, uh, and so, you know. He's got all the backup details and all that stuff too, but he's just a second department. But anyway, just wanted to let you know, so you can let the scale operator know that we're coming in here today. Most likely, it'll probably be, you know, it's ten, fifteen loads, something like that. And, uh. See you later. Uh. I believe it. Well, I believe the blow is to the candidates, this one, industrial park. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, all right, and I appreciate it. Take care. That's that, that's what I said. Pretty great part of the setup. All the, all the, all the, yeah, it's all in the left. All three. Yes, sir. Yeah. Awesome. That's a great decision. So. Man, like, I don't like that. They were staying, so.
Yeah, they were.
All right, uh, coming out of executive session, we do have, uh. Do have some votes to be taken, I believe. CD, you know, this is where we are. Okay, so we have, we'll go ahead and take up the ordinances first, and then we'll go through the executive session. So, uh, first ordinance is eleven dash oh nine. Do I have any motions there?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ben, second by Miss Summers. Uh, all, uh, any further comment pertaining to ordinance eleven dash oh nine? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up is an ordinance eleven, national eleven. Uh, do you hear any?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Colm, second by Mr. Townsend. Any further comment? All in favor? I'll see you then, miss, thank you. Next up is, uh, ordinance eleven dash twelve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Colm.
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Davis this time. Any further comment? All in favor? I'll see you then, miss, thank you. Next up is, uh, let's see, uh, ordinance eleven dash thirteen.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Ordinance five.
Excuse me, motion by Mr. Colm, second by Mr. Townsend, any further comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all in favor, you know, miss, thank you. Okay, um. Let's see, next up is eleven fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we've, uh, delayed that orbit three, orbit three today, uh, as we may need a little further information to the company.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll delay that until, um.
I appreciate if we can do that.
Okay, we'll delay that till the next meeting, who provides some additional information. Okay? Uh, let's see.
I have one piece of new business.
Yes, sir, please.
arising out of our executive session meeting. And like new, that we approved the property contract with power letter, raceway.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Colm, second by Mr. Townsend, any further comment there? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, have two opposed? Okay, very good, passes seven, two. Any other old or new business we can take up this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a corresponding budget amendment resolution to go along with that vote, if you are interested.
Yes, ma'am, please.
The budget amendment resolution for an appropriation transfer of three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the corresponding supplemental appropriation for an increase in the Lexington County Airport Capital Projects Fund. Uh, there is a series of accounts that you'll see on this particular budget amendment resolution. As soon as we know the corresponding cost for the listed. That's all I have.
All right, and it's all the budget amendment resolutions, any other old or new business before we adjourn? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Motion and second by Miss Summers, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.